I'd like to call the December 11th meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to order, and I'd like to ask you to all stand to sing the pledge from the flag that's over on the corner.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so let's just take a moment to remind everyone that this meeting is being taped to air on all sorts of places, DCTV, YouTube channel, all sorts of stuff now. And I'd also like to ask you to turn off your ringers on your cellphones now, so we don't forget. And then I would like to start with a roll call, please.
Dr. Shannon Jenkins.
Here.
Mr. John Noons.
Yep.
Ms. Kathleen Amorall.
Yeah.
Dr. Carol Karafodis.
Here.
Mr. Christopher Oliver.
Here.
Alright, so the first item on our agenda is public comments. So if there's anyone who would like to speak about any of the items that are on our agenda for this evening, you are welcome to step up to the microphone that's at the podium right there. Please introduce yourself and we'll hear your thoughts. Alright, so having no takers, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is approval of the regular session minutes of November 20th, 2017. We'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Alright, so I have a motion by Mr. Noons, a second by Ms. Amorall. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstention. So Dr. Karafodis abstains, she was not here. Alright, so next we're gonna move on to spotlight on kids for Dartmouth High School to talk about the media program. We're doing introduction, is Mr. Tebow just gonna do introduction here? Thank you.
Good evening and thank you. It's my pleasure to present the Dartmouth High School TV Media Program for recognition as part of the Dartmouth Public Schools Spotlight on Kids Program. Our DHS TV Media Program includes 60 students enrolled in various courses throughout the day, and an additional 10 to 15 students who are part of the DHS TV Media Club, which meets after school. The task of selecting just one group of students, or just one program to spotlight, is, I imagine, difficult for any high school principal. It's particularly challenging, though, given the number of outstanding programs and student activities that are offered at Dartmouth High School. From our national championship band, to our outstanding athletic teams, to our performing and visual arts programs, the National Honor Society, our academic programs, Dartmouth High School really is a high school that has something for everyone. So, when I was first asked to present, I thought for a few minutes, and then it came to me, that tonight's decision would be fairly easy, because I would highlight those students in that program, that their mission is to highlight everyone else, oftentimes without recognition for themselves. So, the work that Mr. Perotti and our DHS TV Media Students perform includes Dartmouth High School's weekly show, The Tribe, which is produced and edited by our students, published to YouTube, as well as shared out via Twitter on the DHS TV Media Twitter account. They also film and produce Dartmouth's Got Talent with Dr. Gifford, in addition to filming our school committee meetings and various other school-sponsored events and activities. This program's charge is to help Dartmouth High School tell our story, and so it's only fitting that tonight I introduce members of the Dartmouth High School TV Media Program who are here with us tonight to tell their story. Please welcome Cameron Figurito, Owen Gilbo, Abigail Harp, Kyle Lamontaine, Vegas Marshall, Connor Moniz, Isaiah Nevz, and Ashley Pachico.
I'm just gonna introduce, one of the things that we do at Dartmouth High School this particular year was the Dartmouth 400, which we are highlighting, 400 years of the founding of Dartmouth, and we've gone on several field trips throughout this school year, one of which we filmed in Russell's Mills Historic Village, as well as traveling to Martha's Vineyard to interview the local Wampanoag tribespeople there on the vineyard. And it was a great experience, and we also had a local Wampanoag come into Dartmouth High School, and the students conducted interviews with that person, with that individual coming into the high school. There, as Mr. Tebow said, there's various outlets where you can see the programming. Right now, we are on DCTV, Channel 9, at 7:00 PM every Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and that's our weekly tribe show that airs on DCTV, and also on Saturday at 7:00 PM, as well as on Sunday at 10:00 AM, you can see our programming on Channel 9. Our other various outlets are our YouTube channel, youtube.com/DHSTVmedia, or on our Twitter account, which is twitter.com/DHSTVmedia. So, like Mr. Tebow said, it's about the students here today. I just want to say they've, they've worked very, very hard to be recognized, and I think it's, we've produced The Tribe week in, week out, without failure, and every episode keeps getting better and better, and I think it's about, about the students here who really deserve the credit and the honor. So without further ado, I'd like them to talk. So, up first are our student, two of our student hosts, which actually all of them have hosted the program, but two of our students' hosts, Cameron Figurito and Isaiah Nevz, are gonna talk about hosting the program.
Hello, I'm Cameron.
And I'm Isaiah.
So, we're one of the three teams that host The Tribe, and we're here to talk about the process of producing The Tribe, so we figured we kinda share the steps that go into that. So, the first step, in the studio, is obviously you gotta set it up, you gotta turn on the cameras, connect the mics, connect your laptop for your teleprompter, you gotta turn on, like I said, the studio lights, just a bunch of tasks, you have to get ready, you can't just turn the camera on and expect magic, it doesn't work. So, once it's set up, you can begin the filming process, you have to read the script off the teleprompter while looking at the specific camera angles, if you're looking somewhere else, camera's pointing at you, it's gonna look silly. So, our director, Josh, he's actually not here today, he's the man not on camera, he's the director, he's the one who's making it all work, you know, he sets up the shots, basically makes us look good. So, once hosting's complete, all the recorded footage, you gotta edit it, and then that's how the show kinda comes together. And Isaiah?
My favorite part of the show is the weather segment that I, that I do. I stand in front of a green screen background, which is then replaced with a weather graphic, and my job is to inform the students on the weekly weather, and I also do co-hosting with Cameron Figurito. Thank yous for having us.
Good morning, DGS, I'm Ashley Pachico, your host for this week's morning show. Let's get started.
Hey, everyone, welcome back to another episode.
We're your hosts, Abby.
And Kyle. Let's get started with this week's morning show.
Good morning, Dartmouth High School, how am I saying?
You have to say about the book camp. You said you wanted more for the month, so we don't give them anymore. And that's not worse.
Hi, my name's Owen Gilbo, welcome to this week's Sports Tribe. Welcome to the tribe, I'm your spooky host.
Woo!
My god.
How about saying, "No, this is Cameron Figurito, let's get started with this week's morning announcements."
My name is Ma Yubiravat. My name can be 70, the low 62, mostly standing.
Good morning, Dartmouth, hi, Vegas Marshall of next week's weather.
Thank you. So, 59, will you?
Here, with that, you, Kim, take the glasses, go over there, and take, I want security on the center side.
Hi, my name is Owen Gilbo.
Hi, my name's Owen Gilbo, and welcome to our edition of The Tribe. That's our show, everyone, we really hope you enjoyed it.
Tune in every week, each Friday, we see our morning announcements.
Have a great day, thanks for watching.
Owen Gilbo here, Connor Moniz, and thanks for watching our edition of The Tribe.
Have a spooky Friday, darling, my.
Woo!
Thanks.
Next up is Abigail Harp and Vegas Marshall, they'll be speaking to you about editing the packages.
So, I'm Vegas Marshall.
And I'm Abby Harp, and we're here to talk to you about the editing process, along with the old and new technology. We recently acquired new Apple IMAX for editing and exporting our show, The Tribe. This opportunity that Mr. Perotti has provided allows us to work in two different platforms between Windows Adobe Premiere and Apple's Final Cut Pro. This knowledge allows us to learn on both of these popular editing software's, giving us a leading edge.
So, for the pep rally, we use a plethora of equipment, one of the first pieces that we use is with a 3D camera, which filmed with two fisheye lenses. This created a 3D, our 360-degree virtual experience, here's an example of how it works. So, another cool filming method that we used was our new drone that, drone that we recently acquired, this allowed us to film high-definition aerial shots of the gym, along with the main camera that we used to film most of the segments from the pep rally, along with our XLR microphone that I used to interview people before the pep rally. So after filming, I imported the footage onto the computer using Google Drive, which allowed me and my other teammates to view the shots from any device. After doing that, I then imported them into Adobe Premiere, which I used to clip the pieces together and finally edit them. After I finished editing the footage, I sent it off to Mr. Perotti to be included in the show, and now I present to you the pep rally video. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Owen Gilbo.
And my name is Connor Moniz, we're gonna talk about how we use the equipment provided and are able to create our sports segment.
To start, we download the full game footage from DCTV.
After we get the full game clips?
We use a program called Adobe Premiere to edit down the games to like the highlighted parts.
Next, we select non-copyrighted music to put in the background of all our videos.
Once the highlighted reel is created, we then get it ready for studio production.
Our highlight reel is introduced into the studio using green screen technology.
We literally stand in front of a green wall, which is then replaced by high-quality graphics to make it look professional.
Once finally produced, our segment is added to the show.
Here's an example of one of our segments.
Hi, my name's Owen Gilbo, welcome to this week's Sports Tribe, and we are gonna be looking at the football PC United against Pittsburgh, and let's get to those clips. Right now, we have a huge game tap while the Dartmouth defense bringing the Trojan offense back a couple yards. Another great defensive play, we have Nick Pittman causing a fumble while the defense recovers it. Right here, we have a great pass blocking where Nolan Ellis throws Ben Aronson, a huge touchdown. The quarterback for VR wants to build a D, but he can't because Damon Island is getting any ball that's thrown up to him. Right here, we have a huge run by Luke Tissell, getting 15 yards off the Trojan defense. Now, we have Nolan Ellis faking the handoff and running for an open lane to the touchdown. Although we put in a lot of effort, we still lost 35 to 40. I'm Owen Gilbo, thanks for watching The Tribe Sports, we'll see you next time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Kyle Lamontaine.
And my name is Ashley Pachico. We're going to be talking about our experience making our cooking show Too Many Tomatoes and the aspects of filming at DCTV. Before we got into the filming process of the show, we, we had to create a script of what we would be saying and the different recipes we would be making, with the help from Mrs. Lowny, a former family and consumer science teacher from the middle school.
After we created and rehearsed our scripts, we had the experience of filming in a professional setting at DCTV, where we got the chance to use four robotic cameras provided by DCTV that would enhance our production of the show. Also, we got the experience of the directing side, where we use a communication system, soundboard, and video switcher. Once we had the footage, we brought it back to the school to edit, where we use Adobe Premiere Pro. This was the basis of our experience in filming and making this show. So here's a short clip of the cooking show.
So as you can see, most of their work is very diverse, and we are covering a lot of aspects, both at the high school and also in the community. And I think it's highly being recognized, and I say this to these guys every day, it's become such, such a treat for the students to see our show on Fridays at the high school. Actually, one of the teachers, Mr. Brodsky, mentioned to me last Friday that he was getting into the, into the routine of Block 1, and he forgot to put the show on, and the students in his class reminded Mr. Brodsky, "No, we, we need to see the show." So it's become such, such an institution now at the high school, because we've been doing this for so many weeks now, the kids really do enjoy it, and I believe the word is getting out, and it's, it's becoming a great thing, and, you know, we have it, we have to thank all the students who worked hard within the classes, so I'd just like to thank them again for all, for all their hard work. It's nice to be recognized as well. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Everybody have any comments or questions?
I just wanna comment how wonderful it is to see their enthusiasm and to see the passion that really comes forward, and working as a team, all the good things that go into making that final product, and it's really enjoyable, I enjoy watching and, and looking it up on, on YouTube and, and everything, and just a great job.
I see all your likes on Twitter.
Yes.
I just have a question, is this a relatively new program since you've joined us?
Yes, so we started the, it was brought up by the Student Council, actually, last year. We were doing a longer format program, which was about 20 minutes or so, 25 minutes, that we were airing on DCTV, and at the time last year, the students and the Student Council thought it would be a good idea to do a program in the morning, create a program in the morning, as opposed to the normal morning announcements, and that's where it all initially got started, was at the beginning of last year, just talking about it, and then last, last spring semester, we started it as a trial, to see if, could we indeed do this, and it was successful last semester, we, we started producing the show every Friday, and we just continued with it this semester, and this year has already, the program has already improved by leaps and bounds.
Wow, well, thank you, everyone did a super job, that's fantastic, they do the whole thing, they do the, the editing, the writing, and setting it up and all that goes into it.
Yes, everything. We actually start by, they have to use, we actually use Google Docs and Google Slideshow, so, and they could tell you, we have to create all our scripts in the Google Slideshow, and we use Google Docs as almost our teleprompter, so when they talk about a teleprompter, we just have a computer with a screen, attached to a screen, it's not a traditional teleprompter, we just have it connected to a screen. Our hopes are that we will indeed get a teleprompter that will indeed show in front of the camera, 'cause sometimes, for time to time, you can see the students looking at the screen, so we've kinda worked our way around it, where they memorize some of the first lines, and then we put up a graphic, and they can, I'll tell you, we put up a graphic over the shot, so you don't see their eyes shift over to the screen.
Well, thank you very much, everyone did a great job, we appreciate it, and of course, we appreciate the teacher too for.
Mr. Oliver?
I will just echo my colleagues, great job to you, Mr. Perotti, great job to your students, all of you should be very proud of the quality, professional broadcast, broadcast quality job that you do with your, with your videos that you show on YouTube, on DCTV, just a great job to all of you, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, yeah, again, my compliments, I'm a channel surfer and that, and, you know, but when I get to DCTV, if there's something, you know, the students are on, I'll stop and, and watch it. Couple of questions I have is, how long are these shows, roughly?
So, the morning program typically will run from, anywhere from six to 10 minutes or so, and then the other programs that we produce, like the cooking show that they're producing now is a longer-formatted program, so that's anywhere from 20 to 30 minutes in length.
How long does it, how long does it take, and this is probably more to the students, is how long does it take you to put this, the different segments together?
Pretty much, they have the week prior to the airing of the program, and we, we kinda figure out what we're gonna put on that program, depending on what, what aspects are going on in the school. For example, this week, we've been working on the Hour of Code, so we have, actually a student who's not here tonight, but Josh, he was in the PowerPoint, he's actually working on editing that, what we call a package piece, and we've lately been showing, at the end of every episode, we have a package piece of something going on in the school, and it's been quite popular, because the other students wanna see, see themselves on the, on the show, so pretty much everyone here has edited a, a package that we've used on, either on one of their shows or somebody else's show, and we've covered pretty much everything, the biotech class in the high school, we've covered engineering in the high school, the blood drive, pretty much anything and everything that is going on in the high school, we try to cover and highlight, and if it's not highlighted, it, word is getting around, and teachers will contact me and let me know, "Oh, Mr. Perotti, we have a program going on such and such date, can we, can we get a crew, camera crew, out there and highlight it?" And we try our hardest to get as many of those kids out there and get everything highlighted.
Thank you, sir, great job, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, good job.
So I have to say, I appear on TV sometimes, and I feel like the way some of you do when I watch myself on TV, I could tell, it's not fun, right? You look so much different, but I will say that I feel like you guys do it a lot better than I do, I know how hard it is to read off of teleprompters and to not look weird, and I often look weird, I'm not quite as professional as you, so I'm super impressed by your work, it looks really professional and really well-done. I will also plant the seed to Mr. Perotti that the DEF round of grants is coming up, and, you know, a teleprompter might be a wonderful thing for you all to propose, to think about that, if we can't figure it out in the regular way. And then finally, I'd just also like to say thank you for all of you to come in filming our meetings, it's a real service to the community, it's a way we can communicate about what's going on in the schools, and I can't tell you how many times people have come up to you and said, "I saw you on TV last night," and I think, "What did I do? Why was I on TV?" And I'm like, "Oh, I was at the school committee meeting," so people really do actually watch school committee meetings when you come out here and film them, so thank you very much for your service and for your presentation tonight, it was great, thank you.
Thank you.
I would also like to say, this is the point where we tell all of you, "I know you're very busy and you have homework and things like that, so you don't have to stay for the entire meeting, you're welcome to stay if you'd like, but if you wanna leave now, you're welcome to do that as well." We'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is our Student Representative Report, Ms. Coria.
Hello, I'd just like to reiterate that the media program on Friday mornings really is great, and it's like such a great way to start your mornings. So, I'm gonna start with, our fall athletic season has just ended with a 14-0 shutout over Fair Havren. Recently, the upperclassmen defeated the, the underclassmen defeating the upperclassmen in our annual Powerpuff game, which happened the day after Thanksgiving, it raised a significant amount of money, and I heard it was a lot of fun, I wasn't able to make it, but I heard it was lots of fun. We'd like to extend our thanks to Mr. White, Mr. Bro, and Mr. Lima, who helped officiate the game, and everyone who helped plan it and make it happen. Our winter athletic season is off to a great start with boys and girls basketball, ice hockey, winter track, winter cheering, and our unified bowling league in full swing. The Dartmouth Theater Company recently performed The Last Shot Before Christmas in Elf Jr., they had three sold-out audiences and got some great reviews. Like Mr. Perotti said, Dartmouth High School is currently participating in the Hour of Code program, it's meant to expose students to computer science and coding. I took this class last week during my fitness class, and I found that it was like really interesting and beneficial, just to learn such basic things. I also think that it's very exciting that we're doing something that's so important to our futures. It's being led by Ms. Kane, Ms. Lawrence, and Mr. Aguirre, and so far, Dartmouth High, Dartmouth High students have put in more than 150 hours of coding just last week, and the program will continue on to this week. The Dartmouth High School Orchestra, their Trans-Siberian Orchestra Concert has recently sold out the Zeitarian, this is the second time they've sold out the Zeitarian, and I'm very excited for that show, so thank you to everybody who's coming and bought tickets, and to everyone who helped put the show together, that's it.
Thank you, I'm super disappointed, I'm out of town that I can't make the orchestra.
I have some family members who are too.
Yeah, it looks like it's gonna be a great time.
Oh, it'll be a great show.
Yes. Alright, so thank you for that report, and next we're gonna move on to the first item on our consent agenda, which is the Dartmouth High Ice Hockey Team, request permission to host the First Annual Dartmouth Ice Hockey Tournament at Hutland Arena in New Bedford on December 22nd, 23rd. I will entertain a motion to approve, and then we can have, Mr. Coria can answer any questions about the items on our agenda? So I have a motion by Mr. Noons.
Second.
Second by Mr. Oliver, are there any questions right now about the ice hockey fundraiser? I think it's a great idea, I think it's, I wish we didn't have to have our students fundraise for our sports, but we do, and so I'm glad to see these really creative ideas. So, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So that motion carries unanimously. The next item on our consent agenda is from the Dartmouth Athletic Program for a fundraising proposal from We Fund You, and I understand, Mr. Coria, you're gonna come up and say a few words about that? If you could stop at the podium and tell us a little bit about that, that would be great.
Good evening, thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. This is a newer fundraiser for our athletic program, however, the, the company that is introducing this program is very familiar with our, with our department. They have used multiple, they've sold cookie dough, discount cards, I'm sure many of you- I'm sure many of you have been hit up by various athletes over the years. So we've partnered with them on many things. The situation we're in now is that there are very few opportunities left. There's so much competition for fundraising amongst the teams and, you know, our budget is, there certainly supports our programs, but it doesn't really give us the, I guess, the nice to haves. It gives us sort of the hammers and the nails and the two-by-fours, but we, we, you know, we try and raise some money for some power tools, I guess, and some, some equipment that, that a lot of other athletic departments have. So the girls' basketball team is looking to partner with, with them once again. They've sold cookie dough before. This time, it is a, it's sort of like when a nonprofit looks to seek some funds for, say, a road race and they seek donations to support their runners. It's very much in that vein. The students meet with the company, you know, the, the outline, so the parameters of the fundraiser. The kids provide twenty emails of friends and family members that they can sort of solicit. Again, there's no door-to-door, there's no really cold calling, but the, the program is laid out in an email to the families. They have the ability to donate to the program or not. And I think the power in the, in the program, as I understand it, is the ability to share through Instagram and Facebook and Twitter and so forth, just to get, to get the word out. Attleboro High School recently did it for, I believe, ten days, Attleboro Football, and they raised eight thousand dollars in, in about ten days. And it's, it's very low-pressure approach and, but it's new. It's new for us. We've never done anything like this. You know, I think it's, it's different in that it's not a product. It's not a, a one-for-one where someone's giving, you know, five dollars and they're getting two candy bars. But so certainly, but in, in all of those fundraisers, somebody's taking a little bit off the top to run the fundraiser. And certainly, that's no different here, but I think the difference is that there's probably more direct funds coming to the programs through this fundraiser than maybe any other fundraiser, to be, to be honest. But, you know, things that they're looking to fundraise for, each team has an end-of-the-season banquet. Certainly, those things are not in, inside of our parameters of, of the athletic department. They're looking to get some travel wear to be able to go from the high school to away games so they can look, you know, all in uniform as opposed to just being in uniform on the court. Stuff like that. I mean, summer leagues, different things that, that come up that certainly just can't be supported through the athletic budget. So they're looking to see if they could roll that out this year. Maybe we, maybe even, one idea was maybe we just pilot with, pilot it for this one season. If there are complaints or, or things that people don't like, you know, maybe we just don't, we don't go back to it. But more than happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Mr. Oliver?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Maybe I missed it, but what percentage of the donations are actually going to the school? I'm assuming that there's a small fee or service fee that the company takes?
Yeah, we would get eighty percent. They would take twenty percent to set up the platform and sort of run the fundraiser.
Okay.
From what I understand, and again, I have not run this fundraiser before, I've spoken with some people that have and it's gone well, but a, a typical split is sometimes sixty, forty, seventy, thirty. So I don't know if it's because this is new for them as well that they're sort of making it a little bit more appetizing on our end, but that's the, that's the offer that they've made to us.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? So I just have a question about the materials that was submitted, right? That, there's a sample sheet, sorry, for emails. And it says the students, right, they have a participation requirement of putting in twenty emails. I, I just know, like, I was painfully, painfully shy in high school. And so I don't, it seems like students have to do that. And so I wonder sort of how that works. Like, what happens if you don't submit twenty emails? What if you only submit ten, right? How, how does that work? Because it seems to suggest you must have twenty and I worry that that may put some pressure on students who maybe don't have any standard family network or something like that to call on.
Sure. And I think this, again, the paperwork that was submitted was, I think, your standard paperwork. We even talked about the fact that Mom and Dad are on there and Mom and Dad are already cutting a check for a user fee. So we talked about maybe taking them off as well. This was really just a sample. I see it as, most of our rec, most of our fundraisers that we run, you know, there's a, there's a recommended amount of money everyone raises because it's, it's nice to be able to say there's fifty kids in a program. If everybody raises fifty, there's twenty-five-hundred that can get X. But to say that that ever happens is, is really just not true. I mean, some kids ra, ra, bring, you know, a hundred and other kids sometimes only bring twenty and, you know, the coaches, as much as it seems that maybe they don't because we always have to fundraise, no one really likes to fundraise. The coaches certainly, it's, especially it's your busiest time of the year. You're in season trying to fundraise with, because you don't want to fundraise too much out of the season because you don't know who's going to be on your team. So you're fundraising really at the busiest time. So I'd like to think that there's very little pressure on the kids. It's really just, we, we kind of cross our fingers and hope that everyone gives their best foot forward and, you know, we come up on, on the other end with enough funds to do what we need to do, but.
I, I mean, I don't have a problem with that. I just would hope that it would be presented, right? It's, it's a fundraising goal and a participation requirement that we might present all of these as goals, right? This is what we'd like to see because it, the way that it's worded when you say it's required that you submit twenty emails, right? When I say something's required in my class, if you don't do it, there's a consequence from not doing it. So I don't have a problem with saying this is a goal, this is what we like for everyone. But I would like to see that it's worded, not that you're required to do it, because it almost makes it sound like you're going to get kicked off the team if you don't give me twenty emails. And I don't think that's what we intend at all, right?
No, it's not, of course.
Absolutely not. So I just want to put that piece of input in there.
Yeah, we could, we can tailor this to, to really say anything. You know, I, this is, I think, just their, their suggested sort of form, form letter.
Are there any other questions?
Nope.
I just, I agree with your comment.
Yeah.
All right, so I will entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, so I have a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Mr. Oliver. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Karen.
Great.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, so the next item on our agenda under Old Business is the Superintendent's Evaluation Process. Dr. Gifford?
Yes, thank you. You should have received the two goals for the year. I did meet with Mr. Nunes and Dr. Jenkins to discuss the Student Learning and Professional Practice Goals, so I hope you've had a chance to review those. The Student Learning Goal, if you recall, we started last year working with our math department, providing professional development and working to align our standards, et cetera. So we will, we wanted to continue on that goal to see if two years' worth of work in that respect shows us some of the improvements that we'd like to see. The second one, the Professional Practice Goal, again, we're working as a team on that in facilitating professional development, supporting professional development, all around the STEM work that we're doing, the new career pathways that we'll be working on, of course, in conjunction with our partner, the Highlander Institute. And we also want to make sure that within that goal, we highlight the work that's going on, not only the high school, but as well as the increase in opportunities at the elementary, such as the iSTEM clubs, et cetera, and, and the middle school with the addition of some of our, the digital literacy teacher, the instructional technology specialist, et cetera. So you see, there's a lot of information going on, especially in that goal, as far as professional development, embedded support, coaching, et cetera. So those are the two goals that we, I would ask that you support and approve. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions?
No, I'm good. We went fine.
All right, so we don't, we don't need a formal motion, do we, on this?
Yeah, it would be nice.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to approve the SMART goals as submitted by Dr. Gifford.
So moved.
All right, so I have a motion by Mr. Nunes and a second by Ms. Amaro. Is there any further discussion? All right, so hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so next on the agenda, we're moving on to New Business. And to start, we have an overview of the process for establishing a new high school schedule. I know everyone's anxiously awaiting the presentation about, I don't have the presentation about how you're going to present the schedule to us, right?
Yes, exactly. So again, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to present. I did want to come in and just kind of touch base about the scheduling process because I know when, any, anytime there's any change, that people get anxious. And it's really, more than anything, the fear of the unknown, I think. And so just wanted to kind of take us through some of the context of how we got where we are today and certainly provide a timeline for where we're going for the remainder of this year to hopefully ease as much anxiety as, as possible. So our current schedule, just so we have some context, Dartmouth High School currently utilizes a four-by-four block schedule. I believe it started in nineteen ninety-eight. Who's that? So, you know, for, for quite a while, this is all that our faculty and our students have known as a four-by-four block schedule. Our block's at eighty-six minutes in length currently and students have the potential in this format to select up to eight courses in a given school year. One of the details that I would like to point out is that there's a variety of course lengths and meeting frequencies currently in place. So we have semester-long courses, we have semester-long A and B day courses, we have three-quarter year courses, we have year-long courses, we have nine-week courses. So with all of these variables, it really puts a stranglehold on scheduling. It really handcuffs folks when we're trying to schedule interventions, when we're trying to meet the needs of our students and really put forth the best schedule possible. Some of these variables right here handcuff our ability to do that. So I, again, one of the things I, one of the points I'd like to make is that there is no magic bullet to, to building a master schedule. There is no perfect schedule. Every schedule, whether it's a block schedule, whether it's a seven period or a six period or an eight period, whatever schedule it is, it's going to have strengths and it's going to come with challenges. And so understanding those, I think, is important to the process. So first, some of the strengths of a block schedule. It certainly supports the use of the workshop model of instruction. Because it's eighty-six minutes in length, you have that block of time where you can prepare and plan for multiple transitions within a, in a class period. So that certainly is a strength. For the same reasons, it also supports project-based learning because you have longer eighty-six-minute blocks of time. It also, in terms of student support, it does make possible credit acceleration and credit recovery because, the credit acceleration piece is if we can imagine our students who want to get to calculus but need to double up, if you will, in math, the block schedule creates an opportunity where you don't have to double up at the same time. You can take one math course in the fall, another one in the spring, and you get really two years of math in that one year. So, so that's certainly a strength of a block schedule. And likewise, same thing with credit recovery. If you, you know, if a student struggled in math, rather than double up in math, they could cer, certainly the opportunity would be there to repeat the course in the second semester if they had to. So certainly, those, those are some strengths in the block schedule. And additionally, you know, it makes sense that with the eighty-six minutes, science and art classes, any class where there's, you know, setup and breakdown, certainly having the eighty-six minutes is, is, is ideal or is nice. It's a matter of convenience. Some of the challenges. It really, the block schedule really poses a challenge to courses that are sequential and build from one course to the next. So being a former history teacher, you know, it's not really a challenge. US one, US two, if there's a gap of time, that's not the end of the world. But if you're learning a, a foreign language, if you're learning Spanish and you have Spanish one in your fall semester and then you don't have Spanish two until the next year, spring semester, you've gone a very long piece of, period of time without having any foreign language instruction. Same could be true of, of math, potentially. So that is certainly one of the challenges posed by a block schedule. Another challenge is that it creates a pacing challenge. One of the concerns that teachers often will raise is that in ninety days, it, it's hard to, to teach in-depth a full curriculum. And so this is particularly concerning for some of our courses that are required for MCAS and/or AP. Having that pacing challenge is, is very concerning in, in those types of courses. And then finally, designing lessons that engage, really truly engage adolescents for eighty-six minutes, that's a challenge for folks. And so along with that challenge, a lot of times with block scheduling, you will see some waste of time because it is eighty-six minutes. So starting the lesson slowly and ending yet a little bit early is much less uncommon than I would like to see. And so that's certainly a challenge posed by the, the block schedule. So, moving on from the block schedule, next year's schedule. What I can share is that there will be seven periods that will meet daily for fifty minutes. All of our core courses will run for the entire year and most of our electives will be half-year. The way that that was decided was the associate principal and myself sat down with the lead teachers for each department and we went through and we really pushed them to think not, what would you like, not, you know, is this a pet course for someone? What are the curriculum needs? Do the curriculum needs justify having a full, a full-year elective course or can it be a half-year? And we had those conversations. And in most cases, there was a easy resolution. In some cases, we had teachers who asked us to reconsider. We did that. We reviewed existing curriculum documents and then made a, a final decision on that. For next year, our faculty members will be teaching five out of the seven periods in a, in a given day. They'll have one period that's dedicated to prepping and then that other period, the seventh period, will be split. It will either be used for PLC time or it will be used for academic support time. And the language that was agreed upon in negotiations really leaves open for us to craft what that academic support looks like. And it might look different, it will look different depending on the needs of the students. So that work is ongoing to, to really define what that academic support period will look like, but it's built into the contractual language and so we'll be able to, to staff an academic support period and offer interventions that we haven't been able to do up until this point. Some other details, lunches will be twenty-two minutes in length. They're currently twenty-four. You know, I, I will say that it doesn't seem like a long time, but being in the high school cafeteria, students are usually done eating before the twenty-two minutes is up, for sure. And then finally, nutrition break will be eliminated. So the reason for, for these cutbacks, if you will, in time, it's to make sure that we have the seven minute, seven periods, rather, that are fifty minutes in length because, again, that was what was agreed upon in negotiations with the DEA. So some of the strengths and challenges of what will become our seven-period schedule. First is that core courses will gain a significant amount of instructional time. So for Algebra One, or we'll use Algebra Two instead. Algebra Two, which currently is a half-year course, I think there's seventy-seven hundred instructional minutes in a ninety-day schedule. It will be nine thousand minutes in a, in a full year, fifty-minute period schedule. So, and most of our core courses, as I said, are all full-year and so there's that significant increase in instructional time for most of our courses. So that's, you know, a strength. Also, they'll meet more frequently because it will be a hundred and eighty days as opposed to ninety. This new schedule, having mostly full-year courses, certainly all of the core courses like Spanish one, Spanish two, those are all going to be full-year courses. And so it eliminates that gap that we talked about in terms of instruction. As I mentioned or alluded to earlier, it includes staffing for the academic support What can't be understated enough is the significant increase in PLC time for teachers to collaborate with one another, to look at student work, to really focus and become a true PLC that looks at continually refining the instructional process and improving outcomes for, for kids. This, the increase here is really significant. At the high school currently, we have PLC time once, once a month, so about ten times a year for an hour. It's going to be forty-five hundred. It's going to be forty-five hundred minutes of C P T and P L C time with the way the, the rotation will work out. So it is a significant increase in time and time well spent, I think, for teachers to get together, collaborate, and make sure that, you know, we're implementing effective practices, make sure that we're progress monitoring and supporting our students along the way.
Would you explain a little bit what P L C is for our audience, TV audience?
Sure. So P L C stands for Professional Learning Community. And essentially what it is, is it's dedicated time for educators to meet, to discuss curriculum, instruction, and assessment. Really focusing on, focusing the conversation on what it is we want our students to learn, how we're going to respond when students struggle to learn that material, how will, how we will respond when students are ready to accelerate their learning so that we're not just, you know, supporting our struggling learners, but we, we owe it to our high achieving students to really accelerate their learning as well. It's time to collaboratively plan and reflect on lessons. That's really what the Professional Learning Community time is used for.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Certainly with fifty minutes, the, the burden of trying to engage adolescent minds for eighty-six minutes will be erased because there's going to be fifty minutes. It's going to really move at a lightning pace, and so really create a sense of urgency and really will require students and teachers to focus in on the learning and the lesson for that day. Some of the challenges that it will face that we will have to address as a school. First is that there'll be an increase in transitions. Instead of transitioning four times throughout the day, now students will be transitioning seven times. In addition to that, they'll be taking seven courses. So part of that transition is likely going to be they'll need to use a locker. Many of our, many of our students use lockers, but many of them don't currently. If you're taking three or four courses, you'll likely be able to carry your materials with you for the day. I don't see that being feasible when you have seven periods in a day. So that's a challenge that we will have to address. Another challenge that this, the seven-period schedule does face is potentially it could reduce elective opportunities. I say potentially because in a block schedule, you could select up to eight courses. And in the seven-period schedule, obviously, you can only select seven, so that would be a reduction of one. The reason I say potentially is many of our students don't ever take eight in a year because of the way those variables play out where some courses are three-quarter year, some are half-year, some are full-year, you know. So it's very, you know, it, it's, not all of our students have a full eight course selection currently, which is why I say potentially it could reduce elective opportunities. Okay, so the scheduling process and timeline. One of the other key parts for people to understand, because I certainly get that sense of angst from people, like, can we just know what's it going to look like? The first, the reason I can't really provide any more information than I am tonight is because student course selections at the high school level are what drive the master scheduling process. Unlike the elementary or middle school level, where certainly there's some choice there, it's much less choice than what students have at the high school level. And so you're, we're not scheduling whole, entire cohorts of students. It's really, students are individually selecting what courses they want. Some students might take an honors-level course in one subject, but a college prep-level course in another subject, and an A P in a different subject. So, you know, you, we're, we're scheduling one thousand seventy-three kids at multiple levels of courses. You know, that, that makes this work very complex. And, but it's also, it's, it's a good thing, right? Because it means that our students have a lot of ownership in their learning, and they can really select courses that they're interested in. And that's really what our, one of our pushes at the high school is to really personalize the learning, and this is part of that. So, what we're currently, where we currently are in this process is we're finalizing the revisions of the two thousand eighteen, nineteen program of studies. I alluded to some of that work earlier where we had to identify which courses would be full-year versus half-year. And we're also looking to clean up the program of studies to make course progressions cleaner so that it's easily understood by students and parents. And also that, you know, we're constantly looking to eliminate any redundancy in coursework to really expand access for students. On January thirty-first, I'd encourage all of our class of two thousand twenty-two to save the date. In the evening at six-thirty, we're going to host a showcase evening at Dartmouth High School where all of our clubs and activities, all of our academic programs will be on full display for, for our incoming freshmen to come and take a look at. At, during that night, I will also, administration will give a brief presentation on the new schedule. We'll talk about the course selection process. We'll talk about the different course levels that are offered at the high school and really introduce them and welcome them to the high school. We'll provide them an opportunity to take tours if they so choose. We're going to have various clubs and activities there performing and really giving them a flavor for what the high school is all about. On February eighth, at six P M., we're going to host our Semester Two Open House this year. One of the changes that we made in the fall was rather than have parents sprint through a Semester One and a Semester Two schedule when their students wouldn't be in Semester Two classes or haven't even met their teachers yet, we eliminated that part so that we'd have a Semester Two Open House. We're going to have our parents go to their Semester Two classes. And then at the, after they've done that, that takes about an hour, the second part of that evening will be a program of studies presentation. Again, where we go through the course selection process, where we talk about the new schedule and answer any questions that parents and or students might have. So that would be on February eighth. And then February twelfth through February fifteenth, which is the Monday through the Thursday before February vacation, we hope to have Course Selection Week at Dartmouth High School. And what we're going to ask our counselors, as well as our teachers and administration, to do is to really speak with students about what their college and career interests are beyond high school and really have conversations that get them to understand what the current coursework, how the current coursework aligns to those future ambitions, and really engage them in conversation so that they're making informed decisions about their coursework for next year. And we also, you know, we're mindful of the fact that on that Friday, it's, it's right before vacation. So we wanted to do it the twelfth through the fifteenth, really make it a meaningful week and get us into the, those course tallies that drives the rest of the, the process. So in March of two thousand eighteen, counselors will be reviewing those course selections and will meet with students as necessary. If they notice that, you know, there are questions about graduation requirements or if, if something seems amiss, they'll meet with those students and follow up as necessary. During that same time, while the counselors are doing that work, administration will be collaborating with lead teachers to build teacher schedules because again, it's going to be based off of student interest in the, in the course selection process. And sometimes difficult decisions have to be made between, do we run, do we run an elective or do we run one more core section of a course? Those conversations will be had and decisions will be made collaboratively with the lead teachers. And then teacher schedules will be built based on that. April to May, we'll polish those selections and finalize schedules with the goal being that tentative teacher schedules are shared prior to the end of the school year. And again, I say tentative because at the high school level, we have to be mindful of summer school and things like that because those can have some impact on the number of sections you need in one course or another. But finally, this is our big piece here. In June of this coming school year, in June of two thousand eighteen, we'd like to pilot the new schedule for a few days because as I said earlier in the presentation, a lot of this anxiety will not truly go away until students and teachers live the new schedule. And I speak from experience as a teacher. When I first started teaching, I had five seventy-two-minute periods, and then it went to a seven-period schedule shortly after. So, you know, I've lived through that transition as a teacher. And then at my previous school, as an administrator, we changed the schedule as well. And in both experiences, I think one of the key takeaways I had was that until people can actually live this, they're going to be nervous and anxious about it. So our goal is to, to pilot that in June after the seniors have graduated and have a few days to run through that. I think it's important as well to be mindful of some other work that's going on that's related to this work. And so one of those is a major push in part of our school improvement plan. We're currently building benchmark assessments so that we can do the progress monitoring, so that we can have those conversations in Professional Learning Community, during Professional Learning Community time. And so that's forcing our teachers to go in and look at their current curriculum mapping, scopes and sec- scopes and sequences so that they can make those adjustments now, knowing that next year, things will be changing because they'll have full-year courses. Also, Dr. Kivit talked earlier about the development of innovative pathway, pathways at the high school in partnership with the Highlander Institute. Certainly that work impacts our program of studies and is ongoing. And so that work also plays into this. And then finally, adjusting the graduation requirements. I had the opportunity to present to the Policy Subcommittee some adjustments to the graduation requirements. It's not just about scaling back the number of credits that would be required for graduation, but it's also about looking at what we're requiring and making sure that it truly is preparing all students to be college, career, and future-ready. And then finally, as I, I talked about, streamlining the course progressions within each department and making sure, and making sure that they are articulated in the program of studies. And with that being said, I will be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Thank you, sir. Beautiful presentation. Question that I have is, right now, we have students that are out on dual enrollment and or internships and things of that nature. What happens to those students?
So we have a, a few different options, right? So one of them is to look at how much time they're spending in those current opportunities. One of the, one of the things that, the details I did not mention that I probably should have is the new schedule won't be rotating the same way our current schedule does not rotate. So we typically let them leave during block four, start of block four. So that's eighty-six minutes. It might just be that they leave fifty minutes instead of the eighty-six. But that, that's not something that should be a deal breaker by any means for the dual enrollment or the internship program.
You talked about electives and, and such, you know. I sit here and, you know, are you still considering like music and phys ed as core subjects type of deal? Or is that going to be electives? How's that going to work into the program?
So when I spoke of them, in my mind, those are electives. However, the graduation requirements, as we are proposing them, are, is aligned to mass core. So it does require a certain amount of each of those electives. It requires students to earn credits in each of those elective areas. However, if you're asking about in terms of the course length, that was worked out for, for music, it was, we, we met with lead teacher from every department. So, you know, we met with, one of my favorite meetings was with Mr. Kingsland, who said, if I have eighteen-minute classes, I'm going to teach the students something in eighteen minutes. And if I have eighty-six minutes, I'm going to teach them something in eighty-six minutes. So I thought that was really the spirit of, of this. And it was really, you know, it was refreshing to, to see that approach. But yeah, so, so we've met with the lead teachers for, in those departments and worked that out. Some will be full-year, some will be half-year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Amaro?
Thank you for your presentation. It was really helpful. Coming from a place where I'm actually more familiar with the seven schedule, I grew up with that. I reckon, you know, I'm familiar with that. My daughter, however, is having some anxiety with this. In terms of maybe, you may not be able to answer this, but right now, but in terms of seven, seven potentially, you know, classes or six homework, I mean, will there be some talk around the, how much homework will be required? I can imagine that could potentially be a burden.
Sure. So that's a conversation that I think regardless of the schedule, needs to happen continuously in any high school. I think that, you know, homework to the degree that it deepens student learning is worthwhile. Homework, just to give homework is obviously never appropriate. But, so those conversations will be ongoing. You know, and, and I think that it will take some adjustment for teachers. But I think teachers will recognize that as well, right? That they don't have to move at the pace necessarily that they were with ninety-day classes. So there'll be an adjustment period for sure, but the conversation about what's the purpose of homework? Why do we give it? What is homework that's worthwhile versus homework that's not? Those conversations will be, will be ongoing for sure.
And then my other, I think my other comment would be, you know, you speak to clearly as part of the negotiation, the teachers, talking with the leadership teams and the teachers and the department heads about this. To what degree do you plan to engage the students as to, or are you currently engaging the students as to what to expect?
Yeah, that's a good question, something I did not mention. But during the Course Selection Week, we will hold assemblies for each grade to go over the new schedule with them, to go over and provide, you know, just some good information that they need to know to make informed decisions. We really are working hard to revamp our program of studies of the belief that that should be a tool that every student should use to select their courses. I'm also not naive, and I realize that many students don't do that unfortunately. But part of our assembly will be helping to share information with students so that they're making informed decisions about what courses they're selecting. And certainly part of that for this year will be, you know, explaining to them how many courses they do need to select and what the new schedule will, will look like.
Just one quick one more, you just made me think of, is the, the change in the, the credit for graduation. Does that impact any, any of our, you know, sophomore juniors or freshmen moving on up? Is that something that's going to put them in a position?
Sure. So the credit question, what we will do in, assuming it's approved, but as it was presented to the Policy Subcommittee earlier in this year. We essentially just scale it back over the course of four years. So our current seniors have to earn, or have the opportunity to earn thirty-two courses currently, correct? And they're required to earn twenty-eight. So next year's juniors will be twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-five, you know, it will just be scaled back over the course of four years.
Dr. Karafotis?
Yes, first of all, I want to say it was an excellent presentation. And you give us the, as I listen to you, I certainly have faith and confidence that you know what you're doing.
Thank you.
But I thought it was excellent. Some of the things that I really appreciate is the P L C, the planning time for teachers, the academic support for students. I like the idea of you running the schedule at the end of the school year after the, I think all those things are going to help improve the implementation of the program. I just want to ask, do you foresee any difficulties as our students move into their senior year this coming year?
So I think the, the class that will be most challenged by the new schedule will definitely be the senior class because they've had three years of a block schedule. I think what you'll see is over the course of, I, I think conversely, our freshmen will have the easiest time because it's much more similar to what they've experienced in middle school. Having been in a few different places, having been a student in a seven-period schedule myself, I don't think the Dartmouth students are any less capable of any other students that I've worked with. In fact, if anything, I think they're more capable. anything, I think they're more capable in many senses, in many cases, in many senses. So, I think that they will adjust to the seven-period schedule just fine. It will definitely be an adjustment, but I have the full faith that when all is said and done, I think they'll have been much more nervous for no reason really, other than it was an unknown.
They'll be able to get the courses in though that they need or want for that final year.
Yeah. I mean, yes, I would anticipate. Because really, we're talking about one less course potentially. And I say, I stress potentially because with all of the different variables, not every student currently selects eight courses, you know, so.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Oliver?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, thank you for your thoughtful, detailed presentation. Second, I think someone needs to pinch me because I don't really, I can't believe that this is actually happening. There's been a lot of time, you know, obviously, my personal opinion, this is long overdue here in Dartmouth, and I'm thrilled that we're finally at the point that we're talking about a timeline and a process. So, congratulations to you, the administrative team, everyone involved in putting this new schedule together. I know this is not, this was not an easy task. My one point that I'd just like to make is what I'm hearing out there in the community is that there, like you've said, there's a lot of concern, a lot of anxiety out there. So, I appreciate you trying to get out and showing us this timeline and trying to get out in front of some of these concerns. And I think piloting, after the seniors graduate, piloting for a few days or a week or so, the new schedule is an excellent idea to try to ease some of those concerns. So, I'm looking forward to seeing the next steps. We'll see where we go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Korea, do you have any questions?
I think Ms. Amaral covered the one that I had about homework. The other one I had was about going to our lockers and stuff during seven periods, but then you addressed that. So, I think I'm all set. But thank you.
So, I'd like to also thank you for a great presentation. And I'll reiterate, some of the concerns that I'm hearing out in the community are very similar to the ones that I've heard brought up here. People are worried about internships. People are worried about homework, particularly, you know, students like to take a lot of AP classes. And so, you know, when you're taking, you can spread out your AP classes now. They're going to be a lot more concentrated. So, there's some concerns about that. I was also happy to hear you mention, at least talk about, although it was on a strength of the block schedule, the ability to accelerate. And, you know, the pathway to calculus is just so critical. And I think it has not been, often been made clear to people how to get on that path. It's kind of word of mouth that you've got to double up on math in your first year. And so, I mean, I graduated from high school a long, long time ago. And I managed, our high school had a path to BC, to Calc BC. And so, I'd really like to challenge us to think not just how we get our students on a path to AB, but how we get them on a path to BC. Particularly, we're talking about building biotechnology, computer science, engineering. Students who are enrolling in those sorts of degree programs in institutions of higher education are going to be advantaged by having a path to BC. And so, that may be shooting for the moon, but I'd like to, you know, sort of put that out there. At the very least, I hope it's a lot clearer about what that path is to get into, to AB. Like Mr. Oliver, I'm super excited about this. I think, you know, the research on learning loss is just sort of overwhelming. And there's so many classes that we have, you know, I'm a political scientist, so like history, right? I'll teach you about Congress one semester and I'll come back a year later, teach you about the president. That's fine, right? But when you're taking a foreign language or math to go a full year without having that, it's just not good for the way our students learn. So, I'm super happy to see this. I'm really glad that you came in to present about this. So, I think members of the community can also know that you've heard their concerns and that you're working on them. So, thank you very much for this presentation.
Thank you. And if I could, just touch on the calculus. Certainly, that's a priority for us as well to advance, to open up that pipeline to calculus. And it is work that's ongoing in partnership with Dartmouth Middle School. There's a working group that was formed this year. And so, that work is ongoing. So, I just want to assure you of that.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So, next on our agenda is a committee discussion on building the budget. Mr. Kylie, is this you?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. So, just wanted to let you know, give you an update. We're in the process of building the FY nineteen budget right now. The budget requests are being prepared by the schools, and I'm doing the work on the other non-school directly-related sections of the budget right now. All the requests that we're going to receive are going to be tied directly to student needs and our strategic plan. There's a couple of factors this year that help us out a little bit compared to last year, let's say. First of all, we have the collective bargaining agreements in place. So, the salary side of the budget is much more easily determined than it was last year. We've gotten a really good favorable rate for natural gas for FY nineteen, saving about eleven percent over what we're paying, what we'll be paying this winter in FY eighteen. The probably biggest thing that is yet to be determined is regular ed transportation. That contract, this is the final year of a three-year contract at a flat rate. So, we are expecting some increase on that side. And my hope is that shortly after the holidays, I will get that out to bid. So, we'll be able to inform the budget, you know, based on that. So, those are the things I'm working on. And I know that, I think Mr. Oliver brought it up as having an opportunity for the committee to provide some input in this process. So, just open it up to whatever suggestions you may have.
So, since Mr. Oliver suggested it, we'll start down at that end of the table with his input.
As far as the timeline goes, Jim, when are we expecting to meet as a budget subcommittee? When was the first meeting?
So, the way we have it scheduled right now is February fifth. So, the principals are going to be submitting, and the directors are going to be submitting their budgets December eighteenth, which gives me my Christmas present, I guess. And then, I'll be working to sort of put their requests into the context of the big picture. So, to look at it district-wide and see how those requests relate to the overall budget. Then, we will be having individual meetings with the principals and directors in the second week in January. And then, right after that, we'll have a meeting with all of the administrators together, and then the budget subcommittee. And that will be on, we, right now, we have it scheduled for February fifth, but it's flexible. And with the hope that we would bring it to the school committee on February twelfth.
Okay.
There's certainly time to meet more than that if we need to, within that timeframe.
That being said, I don't particularly have any hot topics in the budget that I'm pushing for. But I did want to at least make it available to the full committee. So, if anyone would have any thoughts, ideas, questions as to, you know, what you personally, or, you know, for the good of the students in the district would like to see built into the budget, now would be the time to have that discussion.
Any comments?
Well, I don't, I haven't really, I didn't really think of.
Pull your mic a little closer. Great. There we go. Thank you.
And just something that I've seen from the outside, you know, for the last few years is, although I don't know if this is capital, so I'll just say it anyway. You can clarify for me whether or not it's proper. But like requesting for, to support some of the needs of our students, like a behaviorist, you know, district-wide. And I know that's been not funded. It's a tremendous need. So.
Sure.
That's just something that I would like to advocate for. I don't know if, again, that's from a.
That's part of the budget process. It is. Yeah. And it's considered, I think there are presentation of district needs along with presentation of individual building needs, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. I know I've seen it there a few years.
Part of the problem is, is we're like a broken record saying this, there's just not enough money to go around. And so, I think every building has significant requests that don't get funded every year.
It's actually really amazing. I think you're on the budget subcommittee with me this year. It's actually amazing, Kathleen, to see all the requests come through from the administrators and directly tied with data backing it up as to how this will significantly impact learning. And we unfortunately have to say no to a large majority of these requests.
Yes. And that was very evident when we were talking about putting the technology teacher in the elementary schools and what a difference they've made. But they've been asking for that for such a long time. So, it's just an example of what we, we don't know what we don't know. And so, people don't know in the community that there's so much that they're doing in the schools, our schools, yet. But they're doing yeoman work and they have needs that, you know, we just have to keep putting off from year to year. So.
Mr. Nunes, any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the things I was, and I just made a couple of notes here, was, again, as Kathleen talked about, was, you know, the staff, you know, the additional personnel that, you know, the departments and the schools, the building administrators are looking for. I wonder, as part of the schedule change at the high school, what that's going to do for, you know, staffing needs, you know, increases and things of that nature. I'd like to see if at all, and again, it's the, you're right, it's the pie in the sky. And if we had the four million dollars for the state average, we, a lot of these discussions we wouldn't have to have, but we have to have them. And, you know, some of the capital, when I say capital, some of the small capital things, you know, that, small pieces of equipment, you know, that they use, you know.
A teleprompter.
Mr. Parati was talking about the teleprompter. And I'm assuming, and just using that program as a, for instance, is, you know, there's probably three or four pieces of equipment that he could use tomorrow, type of deal, to make that program, you know, that much better. You know, they're doing a great job with it. And, you know, to step it up, or, you know, the robotics, or the math, and things of that nature. And again, I mean, the thing that I like always see is, you know, here's the budget and here's what we left out of it because we just ran out of money. Simple as that. And that's always my concern. But, you know, those are the things that I'm looking at.
So, I guess I would say last year, we did, we included in the presentation a list of those items that were not funded. And I would like to continue that, to make that visible. But I think Mr. Nunes makes a good point because I would imagine that every administrator in this room has a list of things that don't even make it onto their list of budget requests, right? Like a teleprompter, this or that. Maybe they're small, or maybe they're just number twelve and they only have room for ten. So, it is important to note that even when we present the list of things that we're not funding, those are like the top of the long list. The other thing that I would like to see, I'm not going to sort of presume to guess or to know what's going on in the buildings. I think the administrators know that best. But I would like to at least see pulled out, and I mentioned this earlier, a highlight of what we're using that school choice money for. I think the community would like to know that, and I think we would really like to highlight. So, that, those are more about presentation, things that I'd like to see in the presentation in terms of information.
Anything else?
Nope. No.
All right. So, moving on to the next item on our agenda is the superintendent's update. Dr. Gifford?
Okay. Let's see, what hasn't been mentioned already through all these presentations. One of the things that we've been working on, I think I mentioned it the last time with the DSAC, we have a math network group that we started to host here. So, that's another meeting's taking place, I think, this week? Is it this week?
This week will be the second.
The network, yeah.
The in-house one.
The in-house one. So, we're doing a lot of work with that. I wanted to commend Quinn School for some of the vertical rallies. I call them vertical rallies that they've been having. Each vertical teaming is different colors. And they have, I think you've probably seen some of them on the Facebook page we've put. So, it's just a nice way to enhance the culture and spirit at the schools. I've been, I just finished actually today at the middle school, was my last one. I've done every chat in every single building over the last couple of weeks, put an hour aside at each school, and it just opened it up for teachers or folks in the buildings to come and just say hello, share an idea, anything that they might want to talk about. So, that's been good. As I said, today was the last one for now at the middle school. We've been able to take advantage of some of the in-school during-the-day chorus and band productions that are happening. So, we've been trying to get to as many of those as we can. I don't know if Kathleen's going to be talking about, I think CPAC has a presentation this week, so I'll leave that for you, I guess. Let's see. We just sent out an email. Folks should have gotten that email, I believe, today, the start of the ISTEM clubs at the elementary schools. So, those clubs will again run two eight-week sessions starting in January at every elementary school. So, have folks will be at home looking for those. And the last thing I just want to mention is, as someone just mentioned a little while ago, I think it was the presentation with the students, we have been participating an hour of code in all of the schools. And again, you've seen some of those things probably posted on Facebook. So, we're very happy that all of our schools participated this year. So, that's just some of what's happening around the district.
Great. Thank you. And now, we have other matters that may not have been anticipated the agenda posting. Ms. Amaral, you want to, you start with your announcement about the CPAC event?
Yeah. Thank you. So, the Special Ed Parent Advisory Council is hosting for the community a search and rescue presentation. So, if either your child or a loved one, you know, with the weather getting cold, if they're at risk of wandering, you know, in unsafe territory due to either cognitive disability or other impairment, two of Dartmouth's finest police officers will be here at Quinn in the library, six o'clock, to present about what is in place for Dartmouth and the greater South Coast community for those instances and those emergencies. And we also have, in the cafeteria, there'll be a handmade gift-making night. So, bring the kids and they, for free, to, with a list, you know, mom, dad, brother, and they can make handmade presents for them and wrap them and hide them under the tree or wherever they want, under their bed for the holidays. So, all are welcome.
Great. Thank you. Any other announcements? Mr. Nunes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a congratulations to our fall athletes. I know our student rep talked about the season being completed, but the standard times has started running their all-state, all-star athletes. And, you know, we've had them in every sport that we're eligible for, so, which has always been good. And the music department is starting all their holiday concerts. They've started already. The DSMA homepage has a list of them. I know the high school chorus is going to be on the twentieth, and the concert band is on the twenty-first. So, hope to see everybody there.
Thank you. Any other announcements? All right. So, I'll just remind everyone, Ms. Korea on the spot. I'm not meaning like that. We used to do that. We used to make the student rep announce the next meeting date. But I will announce it. January eighth, I think I am correct, right?
Yep.
So, everyone have a happy holidays and a happy new year. January two thousand and eighteen. And at this point, we will not be adjourning into executive session. So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
A second? All right. So, we have a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Mr. Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
No one deposed? Good night, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year.